All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to West Rock Hill Township's Board of Supervisors meeting for June twenty twenty four. First court, first point on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance. If you'll all stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
So our first item for the agenda is if anybody in the public has any comments on the public, on the announced agenda items of what we're dealing with, which is consent agenda, confirmed appointments, committees, commissions, engineers, manager, whole business, et cetera. If anybody wants to speak about something or is concerned about it, if you come up to the microphone, because we need to get you on the microphone in order to be able to get good sound from you. And we requested you state your name and address.
My name is Richard Cokie, one two two one Long Avenue. And I just have a question regarding the heritage place. Potential subdivision. Is there any updates on that? Most mostly with the letter I had sent about the, they're using like easement by driveway as their property, but it's an easy.
We had a meeting with the developer in the last month and we're, we're trying to work through those issues.
Okay.
And, and when we have something worth saying to you, we'll be back in touch with more information. But right now, it's just, we're just feeling each other out of this.
Okay. Is it, is it been approved though? Is it, they're saying that it's been approved? Is that accurate or what still?
I don't think that that, that your easement is that was your statement.
Well, they hold the building itself. They claim that it's.
Right. No, that has, that has not been resolved.
Okay. How was other opportunity about the easement? Is that a question?
Frankly, the easement is between you and them, like to the extent that they may not have the access they need to be able to do the things that they show on their plan. That's a township issue. There, whether the extent of the easement that you granted or didn't grant to them, that's, that's a private matter, but.
If I, can I forward you the easement?
Of course.
You could have it on record.
Sure.
It's very clear that once they built that second driveway, how Navarro built it, that he gave up his rights to use it. And that's all I want to protect. I understand it's probably going to be built. I'm fine with that. I just want to protect my rights. I want to be ahead of it.
Yeah, I think Steve probably has a copy of these, but Cherry, please send them to me too.
Okay. Well, I'll send it to township manager.
Perfect.
We'll see this.
Perfect.
And will they revise the plans to show that that easement is not part of the proposed subdivision then? They'd have to prove they have a right to it to be able to show it.
Yes, they would.
All right, thank you.
Can I ask you, sir, before you leave? I just want to make sure I got your, you said your name was Rich Cokie?
C A C C O I.
Okay. And, and you are one twenty two Long Avenue?
One twenty, one twelve twenty one.
Twelve twenty one, sorry. Twelve twenty one. Thank you.
All right, you're level on.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Do we have another public comment on agenda items? Anybody?
Ellie Boss, two eleven Holiday House Road. I was just curious on the action plan about to expire. I don't really know which plans expire and when dates are. For like the Holiday House Road development and so what property? Someone to try to go for forty instead of thirteen? We have a date.
Yeah, we know that is.
Okay. If I may, Mr. Chairman, the Holiday House Road project was only submitted as a sketch plan, so they're not under review pocket until they submit a full preliminary subdivision plan.
So, so the thirteen or the forty isn't happening until they submit for the.
Until they do a full, full plan. That's my recollection.
Okay. Anybody else? Going once, twice. All right, we're on to announcements.
Mr. Chairman, we do need an executive session during the meeting tonight, please.
So have an executive session after the close of business. Any other announcements? Moving along, we get to the consent agenda, Mr. Wippenkamp.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have the May fifteenth, twenty twenty four minutes, the win plan review status, action on plans about to expire, the emergency services report, building and zoning report, public works, a report authorization to bid snow plowing for winter twenty twenty four, twenty five, tax collectors report and treasurer's report payment of bills. I will read the treasurer's report, the general fund, one million, five hundred and seventy two thousand, four hundred and eighty seven dollars and seventy four cents. Highway aid, two hundred and thirty two thousand, three hundred and ninety two dollars and seventy four cents. Open space, one million, four hundred and thirty three dollars, six hundred and thirty one oh eight. The park fund, ninety eight thousand, six hundred and thirty three dollars and fifty eight cents. The equipment fund, thirty one thousand, five hundred and thirty ninety four. Highway capital, one hundred and forty eight three. The street light, forty one thousand, one hundred and twenty four seventy four. The reserve funds, the general fund reserve, four hundred and ninety two thousand, eight dollars and seventy three cents. The A R P fund, five hundred and twenty nine thousand, four hundred and sixty nine dollars. Open space, Manderfield, forty one thousand, six hundred and forty six fifty eight. Sewage maintenance fund, two hundred and nine thousand, four hundred and seventy three dollars and twelve cents. The stormwater fund, thirteen thousand, five hundred and forty four dollars and fifty seven cents. And the escrow funds, two million, five hundred and forty one thousand, nine hundred and forty four dollars and fifty seven cents.
Okay. I've read the meeting minutes. I don't have any questions on that. Anybody else?
None for me. I'd actually make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented by Mr. Lipp.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Do have one half to risk because it was actually a good question as far as the action on plans about to expire. I think that's a new item. I think the planning commission also has now added that, so we might give a little bit of that later on. Now we get to confirmed appointments. And Mr. Detwiler?
Thank you. Kyle Detwiler, Telfenbury Authority Manager, also joined by Patrick Gans, Authority Engineer, C B S Engineers, and John Harrow, Authority Board Chair. Just wanted to make clear the purpose for our attendance this evening, bringing sanitary sewer down County Line Road specifically for the development that was hit about. The purpose for our attendance at this evening, the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection requires sewage facilities planning for this project, which is an Act five thirty seven plan, and that's a special study. So the planning is a responsibility of the municipality township, which the board supervisors must ultimately approve on this next, next necessary step for us to move forward. And that's what we presented in front of you this evening for the board supervisors to adopt and approve by resolution. Now, we're also serving Franconia Township with this, and Franconia Township did adopt it in April. So again, just to make clear our purpose, we are looking for, by way of resolution approval for the Act five thirty seven plan special study. As part of this process, the study must be considered by the planning commission, recommended for approval from them. And I was here on December twelfth in twenty twenty three presenting that to planning commission, which that was moved on and approved, and the planning commission recommended approval. The Act five thirty seven special study process requires thirty day public comment period. That project was advertised by the township. We were not in receipt of any written comments. I did have conversations via telephone and in person. You know, and I'm happy to elaborate if, you know, anybody would like it. By all means, feel free to interject or ask any questions as you feel you need to. But the purpose for the project as a whole, we're going to extend public sanitary sewer to ninety existing properties within the County Line Road Hidden Valley area that are currently serviced by online disposal system. Many of these online disposal systems are failing or require a high frequency of offers. And we're looking to satisfy the existing nineteen seventy seven agreement between Telfenbury Authority and West Rock Hill Township. I'm happy to go further into the project itself. So this is the construction of a low pressure sanitary system consisting of approximately nine thousand feet, two to four inch H D P like individual grinder pumps though, for each connection. Level will be conveyed to the Telfenbury North Lit Station and then to the Borough Authority Plant for Treatment. Two frames, two faces to the project, public bid and the private property phase. The project has been awarded the Pennsylvania H two O grant in the amount of two hundred and sixty eight thousand, twenty five dollars. With the estimated construction cost, public bid we have at two million, ninety two thousand, two hundred and eighty two dollars. We're estimating that the private portion for household is twelve thousand, one hundred dollars. Telfenbury Authority tapping fees, six thousand, thirty five. So the estimated cost per connection of thirty eight thousand, four hundred and five dollars. As we want to be receptive or responsive to some of the concerns that were put forth, Telfenbury Authority has agreed to not proceed with construction if the total cost per connection would exceed forty thousand dollars. Construction has not yet been bid. Once it is bid, T V A will have a better idea of the cost per connection. And of course, we'll discuss it with West Rock Hill Township prior to proceed. Again, I'm happy to answer any decent questions.
I have one for you.
Yes.
You, Mr. Detwiler, you, you are aware of how long this plan has been in place?
Yes.
Okay. I've been in the township here for quite a long time. I've spent twelve years on the planning commission before I became a supervisor. And this has been talked about and talked about and talked about. And I would say maybe ten years ago, we, we made a commitment here that we would try to keep, whenever we would put sewer projects in place like this, we would try to keep them to no more than a sand mound, what a sand mound would cost. And then we also want to go by what the people feel. Now, I do understand that there has been some outreach and it's about fifty fifty outreach. And I always say the ones that don't respond are the ones that probably don't want it. However, my number that I had in my head was, was not capping over thirty five thousand. You're pretty close to that by saying thirty eight thousand. We know, I know, that in order for someone to sell their home, they have to have a working system. However, it needs to be thought about as, as far as being affordable to a homeowner if this thing goes through. And then also, is it a mandatory hookup right away? Is there certain, do you have a timeline on, on how long people could wait if they had to?
Sure. So let me go to the first part as far as affordability. So we did, we did receive some grant funding. We're in pursuit of one.
Okay.
Mr. Lipp, I had myself both reached out to our local and state representative senators to get into the next round of funding and hopeful that additional grant dollars do find their way into this project so that, that, you know, actual economic impact number is reduced per household per connection. But the connection requirements really tie back to West Rock Hill Township's modification. So as we previously agreed upon in discussions, there's no mandatory connection except for the following, right? And that will be a connection upon property resale, connection within ten years of the project being fully complete, substantially fully full completion, and connection upon what the township would determine as a malfunctioning or failing online disposal system. And, and, and working that into either the language or the order. So our suggestion would be that the property owner demonstrates they have an online disposal system upon completion of the project. The demonstration should be a third party inspection system, reinspection certification as a proposed timeframe every three years thereafter. To demonstrate just that the system continues to function properly.
Right. Can I ask you? If, if this project went through and, and you would try to arrange a number that it wouldn't exceed thirty five thousand. You, you mentioned a tapping fee. Could the tapping fee be reduced possibly to make it work so that residents could afford that?
I would absolutely entertain that conversation.
Okay.
I think.
Because you will get the, you will get the money back through, through service. As we all know, you know, time, people paying their, their sewer bill.
Sure.
Will get you the money back at some point in time, but I do know that you have to have the, I, I just had this thought that looking at ways to try to reduce costs, because this is going to be painful for some of those people. They are not going to want it. They're going to, they're going to dispute it, but we all know things need to be done.
And I, that's something with regard to cost.
Yeah.
You know, with regard to cost, the full Franconia Township into this was their economy of scale involved. When you have to this grant and the construction of the opposing is the least costly way of doing this. So we, we are aware of the cost concerns.
Understand.
The other thing is you had mentioned that the cost of constructing a sand mound. You know, I knew that was a, you know, a topic of discussion before. And I reached out to another joint municipality, just to do a lot of those types of applications to what kind of price they've seen. And sand mounds can range from forty to fifty thousand dollars. Micro mounds, fifty to sixty thousand.
Yeah.
So, you know, comparison to, you know, somebody constructing a sand mound or a micro mound, I think we're in line or, you know, work advantages. The other thing to consider is, you know, some of these people may not have the room to build a sand mound or a replacement system on the ground. They're going to be in a fix. So, you know, this time, and I'm fully aware that this has been talked about since nineteen seventy seven.
Yes.
So this seems like a very good opportunity where we pull other resources in, you know, a grant, a joint municipality. And we're looking at a hard good opportunity for us costs and so.
Okay.
And certainly, you know, the access and connection to public utility and to a public sewer, that would help your property value reset value.
We, we all know that. And, and some people can't resell their house without, the system has to be operating, functioning to today's standards.
But I would even put even on a more pressing scale, the number of folks with a failing online disposal system who also have well water.
Yes.
To see what affects a failing online septic system that underground seeps into a well that could potentially bring capacity. Becomes a public health matter and a public health concern.
Sure.
Even worse than just talking about a B C L value. You know, so that is a point of emphasis that I would just like to get back.
We've had that, we've had that concern since this project first started to be discussed. That's why it was discussed, because of the failing systems. And as I say, I was on the planning commission for twelve years and I'm supervisor for eighteen years. So it's been a long time.
I would just again, want to reiterate, this is the purpose of this for us this evening is to move forward with the next required step. And it's not a shovel in the dirt. We're going right now, tomorrow. It is to get through the Act five thirty seven special.
Understand, I understand. That's all the questions I have regarding this matter?
And I, I want to add, what Kyle mentioned there, it is, it is just a step in the process. You know, first, first of all, you know, walking twelve, eighteen months out.
Okay.
You know, we are going to have to work with the township with regards to weight connection. As Kyle pointed out, our manager, you know, every time, we don't want to let a lot failing system persist. Also, we'd also like to recruit one for the project. So, you know, this isn't the end all by approving the special study that's submitted to D U P.
Understand.
They still have to approve. And then we still have to, you know, the pricing and come back to you with that pricing and talk about connection ordinance. So there, this is a process and we're part of the same.
Sure. Appreciate that. Thank you.
I would like to say something. My concern, and I think I agree with Mr. Kaiser, that you've got a total estimated cost for the property owner at thirty eight thousand, four hundred and five dollars. I'm not quite sure how you came up with that number. I'd like to know how negotiable that number is. You talk about getting grants and trying to drive that number down, but there's no guarantee you're going to get any more grants than you already have. Oh, there's a, for instance, there's a currently, there's a house at Circle Drive and County Line Road that's for sale. Whatever the price is X number of dollars. If someone didn't come to this meeting or someone wasn't really in tune with what's going on in the township, or read the newspapers, and they wanted to buy that house, they would have no idea that it's going to cost them forty thousand dollars if the system is failing. They're going to have to pay to have someone come in and tell them if it's failing. If it's failing, they have to hook up to the, your system as it says here, or they're going to have to do it in ten years, whichever occurs first. So those people are putting out four thousand dollars a year in a little titty so that if they get to that ten year mark, they can afford to do this hookup. So, I mean, is it fair to the people that are going to purchase that house that, or they're going to have to drop forty grand in it, or is it fair to the current homeowner that have to lose forty thousand dollars?
So if, if this didn't move forward in this project one way, that what is the anticipated cost for a total replacement time?
Yeah, like I mentioned, they're talking forty to fifty thousand dollars in, in a closing system.
Dude, that's not completely responsive to his question though, because I had the same, but you can say that whoever sells the house has a duty to disclose the fact that after ten years, but it, it doesn't work that way in the real world. Somebody sells the house a year after this line is installed. And then you, three years later, it gets sold again. And now you've got the fourth owner and who are the people going to go against for not disclosing the fact that, that this bill is coming due? You know, the, the, the original seller that never told anybody else is long gone or maybe dead or living, you know, it's, it's just like it, the ten year thing is troublesome. And, and whatever the board decides to do, I think we have to work around some kind of nebulous figure ten years out that maybe can or maybe the current owner at that ten years from now will have notice of it, maybe they won't.
These are all items to discuss, you know.
Right. I, I'm not saying they're insurmountable, but, but I, that's, that's different than the mandatory connection ordinances we've worked out with, with Sellersville or P R A.
And we're open to any suggestions.
That, that's, that's a tough one.
Yeah. And I'm one of those a lot of programs that play that work as finance authorities, finance vehicles that would have won this. I would say those are conversations that we would have as part of, ready to move forward with the construction and not the Act five thirty seven special study approval.
I don't disagree that, you know, you have, it's an area that's been thirty five years probably. Okay.
Forty seven years.
Excuse me. That, you know, we, we have an issue, an environmental issue, a public safety issue that has to be resolved. But my concern is the price. And also, when I look at your, we're talking about, we can resolve this, we can resolve this problem, we can resolve all these issues that were being brought up, well, we, we can resolve these going down the road. But you're going to advertise this in October of twenty four. You want to award the contract in November twenty four, you want to begin December of twenty four. And once the train leaves the station, what recourse do we have to the citizens of our township to protect them? And this is one of, one of the issues I think we're trying to resolve this evening.
If we have to come to you for the connection. You know, and we're telling you tonight that we're going to come back to you with the pricing and make sure we're all in agreement that we're wanting to pull it with that first.
And if we're, and if we're not in agreement and the train's left the station and you have this projected schedule, then what happens?
So we, we backtrack, you know, we can pull West Rock Hill out of this. Franco is committed to go forward with his grant money. They see that. They've already adopted this by resolution. So we can back West Rock Hill out of this and Franco, we still don't figure it out. That's a possibility. You know, like I said, we're, we're partners in this. So it's not as though we're not going to be talking to you throughout this process, and in particular with regard to the connection.
Right.
That comes after we get cost and figure out how we're going to handle.
But just from a logistics standpoint, you put it out to bid and the bids come in. At that point, you've got a lot of tasks to accomplish before you award that bid. And when you put the bid out, like I've never seen somebody put a bid out and then say, because you have to say when, when you're going to award the bid. We'll award it three months from now, but it's quite a task list. You, you want us to like, look at the bids. Okay, here are the prices. You know, like here, what's the mandatory connection ordinance going to look like? And we have to negotiate that. All of that has to be done before you actually award the bid.
And hopefully we have all, all the connection ordinance worked out and some thoughts with regard to other costs and tapping fees, that sort of thing worked out for the connection. Or I do, hopefully we have that, that stuff worked out before the bids are received. Then once we get final numbers from the bid, then we know whether this is going to work or not.
Yeah, and then you're just ignoring.
But the only.
E P can play in this. We're not even talking about that.
As you say, the only guarantee you, you've given us is the fact that if it exceeds forty thousand, you're not going to move forward. That's the, that's the only guarantee that we, we have.
Now, he's not necessarily even had that guarantee. Because the E P can just overrule all of us and say, wait a minute, you're putting a line in, you're going to serve these people, whether they like it or not.
Or the E P can say that at any point.
Yeah, we know, we know. Anyway, I, David, I'm sorry, are you done for now?
I just want to reiterate, I know that this needs to be done. I know that there, there's issues out there. But we, as representatives of this township, to the taxpayers, have to look out for their pocketbooks. And I can tell you, I know people personally down there that are retired and on fixed incomes, and this will affect them. So I know how business works with the communities, and I know that there can be some negotiation in the authorities' level, see whether or not maybe a tapping fee could be reduced a little bit. I know your construction costs are your construction costs, but I mentioned tapping fee because tapping fee can be recuperated over time. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
And I did have one concern or comment, just looking over it. I'm curious in doing your prep work as T V A looked over how many of the homes have been resold or may have actually had updated sewer systems and septic systems put in. Because I'm just doing a quick look through and I know that probably twenty five or thirty in that general area have been sold in the last about ten years.
So what I would say is, in the line of the conversation I have with residents, right? The person who just put out forty, fifty thousand dollars to replace any online disposal system and now has an expectation that they're going to have to put out that money again, in that public sewer. If that person exists, they're going to be out. What I would also say is the person who's faced with a completely deteriorated online septic system that needs a solution that isn't temporary, like another online system. We're talking about a permanent solution that you do not have to worry about. That person exists just as much if not more to provide this answer for that at an equivalent cost.
Okay. And how many homes are in the West Rock Hill side?
In the West Rock Hill side, um, forty nine.
Okay.
Out of ninety total, right?
Yeah, right. Yeah. Okay.
And the, in, in the, the ten year, looking at your thing here, connection within ten years of the project, where's the ten years? Is that just some magic number? Why isn't it fifteen? I'm just thinking about the people.
We just threw that out there. That'll, like I said, that, that can all be ironed out down the road. This is one step in the process with things moving. And in the meantime, then start working on the transactional.
The ten year would be negotiated, would be the tap.
Okay.
And the projected, the project bidding and construction that you've given us, the schedule, that's etched in stone?
Yeah. It assumes that the E P is prompt and responsive with, with the comments we submit. It assumes that they, they get a reasonable amount of time to review and get comment back to the special study. they get a reasonable amount of time to review and get comment back to the special study. Uh, no, it is not.
It is, it's our best estimate, however, we do have a grant. September twenty-sixth.
What's the deadline?
September twenty-sixth.
I'm, I'm okay with moving forward if my fellow board members would like to. But there will be, there will be negotiations regarding the tapping fee. I know that this project should happen. I know there's concerns with the residents. But we have to start somewhere, as I understand, and you need, you need to prepare your plan.
And Pat's related to that, because we're a working partner, as in we get notice of authorization bid. And you will know who those contractors are before any authorization or authorization to award, those are the potential awards. And you will know all of the intricacies that comes as the effect on homeowners, but the actual approximated cost is.
I have no further questions.
Um.
Go ahead, Mary.
I don't know which way you're leaning, whether you're leaning toward adopting the resolution or not. But if you're leaning toward adopting the resolution, I think some of the things that you discussed tonight should be part of that emotion to approve the resolution. And I think that that should be memorialized in a letter to T B A um that accompanies the resolution.
I'm, I would expect nothing less than that to happen. And when I said the number, I was pretty confident that the thirty-five thousand dollar number is is what I think would be digestible to people, not to everybody but to people. And I think that there could be room there for that negotiation to happen. So, yes, you're quite welcome.
So I would need a motion, second public comment.
I would be happy to make a motion to move forward for this project with the outlined concerns incorporated into the resolution, Mary.
And that is, um, the negotiation.
With the connect.
Price.
Yep, price.
Timing, time, ten years.
Ten years.
We have to talk about.
Conditions of connection.
Mandatory, yeah. I just don't want a gun held to our head that we start this process and then we have no recourse.
Township can withdraw from project if price is not satisfactory. And T B A will leave ample time between receipt of bids and award of bids to have the necessary prescriptions with the board.
I will second that motion.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
You're welcome. Not thank you, not thank you for that.
Somebody on Circle Drive.
Okay. And we have our, having that going through, do we have any public comment? Concern. Going once, twice. Uh, Zach Durstine was a confirmed appointment.
Thank you, everyone.
Have a good night. Yep.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for, again, I appreciate it. I'm Zach Durstine. I'm here from Durstine's food service distributor on State Road in Seltzer right now. And the project is pending at thirty-one fifteen Old State Road. Thirty-one fifteen Old State Road. New building project. And we're trying to build phase one, a hundred thousand square feet for cold storage in the food district. And trying to add forty jobs to that project. Potentially great grounds later this year, either fourth quarter or the first quarter twenty twenty-five. This project will be costly, probably ten to million dollars. For it to make it work, we're looking for any opportunities to reduce the cost. One of the programs that I learned about was LERTA, L E R T A, it's even more about than I do. But I'd like to ask the township for support on this, on this project over ten year period.
Zach, would you explain that a little bit more detail for people that aren't aware of that? You're, you're, you're basically, you're here asking for taxes to be reduced?
Yes, so the LERTA program.
Okay.
My understanding would be over the course of ten years, taxes would be I'll pick around number, it's like ten, let's say they're a hundred thousand dollars here, that building for taxes. My interpretation would be first year you only pay ten percent, a ten, a ten thousand dollars. Second, we pay twenty thousand dollars, third, we pay thirty thousand, et cetera. Until the tenth year, you pay the full taxable amount of one hundred thousand. And then starting year eleven, every year. Are this and Bob?
No. Bob Cormack with the Bucks County Economic Development Court. Uh, myself and a couple of different agencies in the county that would, Zach can talk about different programs. One of the programs we felt that was really possible for this particular project was LERTA, Local Economic Revitalization Tax Assistance Act. It is a tax abatement program on the improvement to the property. Which means the original tax base does not dissolve, it stays in full effect for a ten year period. So all you're looking at is the improvement that doesn't get taxed the first year. It gets taxed ten percent thereafter over ten years. So it's an achievement on the improvement to the property, the existing tax base is not, is not diluted, it stays exactly. The program was established in nineteen seventy-six. It's been utilized throughout the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania from small cities to large cities. We use it in economic development, purchase uh projects like this because Zach's building does not own tax project and building does not allow for it to be part of other state financing programs. Typical, we look at P I D A, you forget the acronym, P I D A, Pennsylvania National Home Authority, or tax free financing or incremental financing, the whole slew of programs we've looked, but none of them fit the case of large warehouse distribution. And if you would like, just to give you an example, U S Cold Storage, when they went up into original township, used LERTA as their abatement for their taxes because they could not fund and finance the program for the state. So this particular scenario has been done to the full extent.
Okay. Well, as I, I will, as I will share, my position has always been to try to keep the residential taxes as low as possible for the homeowners. And we create our commercial growth and development and our funding for the township through businesses and growth through commercial development. So I don't know what that'll do to the um, to our tax situation here as far as how much that would, that would decrease, that would come to the township. But I would like to, I'd like to know about that before I would consider supporting anything like this because as of, as it stands, I didn't feel comfortable supporting this situation.
I know it will not decrease taxes at all from the year today. Probably the same tax. The only difference would be postponed of the, of the new taxes on the. There was no decrease in the taxes that we have today. That was called this. There would be a postponement on the new taxes for the program.
How long?
Ten years.
Ten years postponement.
Not a hundred percent, ten percent the first year.
Right.
I, excuse me, excuse me, Zach, I have a question. In order for this tax abatement program to move forward, in layman's terms, what what do you need for for that approval? Is it just the township or can it be approved without the township?
It can't be approved.
Without.
But I don't know.
It's not me. All right.
Excuse me. The program was established in seventy-six. It wanted to see all three taxing bodies be involved with the program. That would be the school district.
Okay.
The county and the township.
Okay.
They also put a provision there that you only really need to have two if you want it to. Uh, which, if you don't have the school district.
Where.
That you don't have a alert program because of like, of the realistic taxes associated.
School district versus the county.
It's township. That has happened once in Bucks County, down in Bristol Borough. Uh, one company in the it was a ceramic company, went into the old warehouse and distribution facility uh downtown in Bristol and Borough, you know, except the program, the school district did it. So that has happened.
Have you gone to the school district or the county at this point?
I have gone to the school, yes.
And what did they say?
My interpretation was they were positive. Do you agree, Bob?
Uh, wearing another hat, I sit on the school board and I'm on on a facilities committee. Uh, we have looked at the project, we agreed a ten year program, doing email through our superintendent, Dr. Varias or Mr. Varias, Sean, our business manager. So we backed away from moving in forward until the Mrs. Durstine talked about township and we started to move forward with looking at the township, at least agreeing that there be a participation or participant with it and also looking.
I gotta be honest with you, Zach, I'm not comfortable with it. I'm not comfortable with with the plan, the concept. That's just me. That's not the, that's not speaking for these two fellows.
What is your timeline on this?
I'd like to have, in order for the uh.
I mean, tonight is perfect, I understand that, but in the big picture here, you're talking about will, will the board support your request? What's, what's your timing on it?
Sixty days, the next thirty-six days, I should have answered. I'm trying to help with my lender about what the protocol will look like the first five years. It's a big piece of the puzzle. Jay, is there anything specific I should think about?
I, I, I'm, I'm just hesitant on, on the amount of money that is would be delayed over the course of the years, the percentages. And that's something that I really probably need to educate myself a little more on. Dollars and cents. Uh, my goal has always been to try to not raise taxes, to try to keep, and and we do generate revenue through new business growth and development. So that's something that I would like to be able to look at too that I'm uncomfortable with right now because I don't really know what the percentages will mean to our budget.
I, I also have a question. You keep saying postponed, but you, we never make that money back. When it's, when you don't pay the ninety percent, it's not postponed, we don't give it.
So, yeah, so you're saying, right? So if it's over ten years, you're only getting ten percent the first year. My initial post-bond thinking, yeah, you're gonna get a hundred percent in the tenth year. But you're not gonna get it around something year one. You are correct about that. I was thinking, Jay, that by getting LERTA, it increases the probability that I can get the funding to do the project. Which does increase the tax benefit to the township. If I don't get the LERTA, that decreases the probability.
Oh, I, 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 I thought you already had the project in place.
Pretty serious about it, but I don't have all the funding yet.
Okay.
That's it.
Mr. Kaiser, if you would like, I will warn the numbers for you and then to Silver Todd.
I would appreciate if you did that, yes. That would help. That would help me un, that would help me understand. Thank you.
And if I just quickly double check, then running my numbers, if you're ten percent, twenty percent, essentially that means that you're gonna have, you're gonna be paying, you're gonna get a a forty-five percent uh deferral or decrease on the additional assessed value of the buildings. Because you're basically only gonna be, you're talking about the increase in value because the land isn't changed, you're just talking about the increase in assessed value of the property, ten percent, twenty, thirty, that it's up to fifty-five. So you're gonna be getting about a forty-five percent uh lead in to make the project more interesting for you, to bring more business into the area. Roughly right?
I do that calculation.
Oh.
If it makes sense, ten years divided by two, it makes sense.
Yep. All right, I have no further questions.
I have none.
And we just wait till we get more information. I'll look forward to the information. We do.
I recommend we table this.
Yeah, I think we have uh questions.
Oh.
Maybe a comment and question, which I believe are appropriate. Something related here. We have to.
Name and address.
We have to get you up to the speaker so that we can hear, so.
Thank you, Zach.
Thank you.
Angela Goodwin, Niva Ruth, um, just to educate you and listen a bit more. Philly has a tax payment program, which they do for new homes. It's residential only. I don't know about commercial, but residential only, they do for new homes. It's something they started and ordered the brain residents in Philadelphia. So what you do is a new resident pays taxes on like the land until the home is built or remodeled. So they pay taxes on what the current value of property is until and that's all they pay though for ten years. I don't know about this program, but I just want to kind of go in on that. I don't know what this would be for us, but it's kind of like, you know, that's what they do.
Thank you very much.
Brian Murray, Bridge Valley Road, just a question, what is the, the lot that this is going to be built on? What's, what's existing in that?
Farm, cornfield, isn't it?
Farm and home.
Farm and home.
Yeah, cornfield off of Old State.
Okay, so LERTA is a revitalization tax abatement. It's for the purpose of usually taking like derelict buildings. So like historically in in Perkacy, right, like they, they acquired a LERTA tax abatement to that Delbar property.
Okay.
And they built beautiful apartments there. That building was riddled with crime and like ugly and they made it beautiful. So that's appropriate use of that tax abatement, in my opinion. Um, Henry's School Board approved that one. Henry's School Board, I believe this was twenty sixteen, is it? Henry's School Board denied the airport development that LERTA tax abatement. I'm ninety-nine percent sure.
You're correct.
Okay, so like, this is, I think, a similar situation where the airport project was vacant forest.
Right.
They were attempting to develop into the monstrosity that's there now.
Right.
And they denied that application. So I think you should also deny it. Given that it's farmland, it's not revitalized. And um, also, just a question, is there um what's, I know he has another application on Cattle, like what's the right?
He, he wasn't applying.
Has to be removed.
That was withdrawn.
Okay.
Can, can I just bring up one point? I need to go top.
Yeah, to get recorded.
Counselor, your name again, please?
Bob Cormack. Bob Cormack with the Bucks County Economic Development Corp. and I live at three twenty-eight Harry Drive. Perkacy with X eighty strike. All I want to talk about is the zoning approval. All I want to talk about is the zoning approval, uh, the conclusion of the zoning hearing board for West Rockville Township, it was on the twenty twenty-three. And it was about the property we're talking about. And again, LERTA was originally established, and I'll be very candid with you, to work on blighted properties in the downtown districts in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. That was one of the main reasons why it was there. But if you're an economic developer, you look at all these different programs to try to figure out, how can you make it work to bring new job opportunities into your district, into your county? That's what it's all about, job creation, and sustainable job creation, not to have people come in or.
Sorry, Bob.
Sorry.
And then we position. This property is interesting, because if you look at the discussion, uh, at the zoning ordinance, it says, there are narrow physical circumstances or conditions, including irregularity, narrowness, shallows, shallows of slot size or shape, or exceptional topographical or physical conditions, particular to a particular property, unnecessarily hardship to the such condition. This is what they are. Because of such physical circumstance or conditions, there is no possibility that the property can be developed and strictly conforming with provisions of the zoning ordinance. That's what you're telling me that that property sets emissions. Unnecessarily hardship is not created by the applicant, and this happening, this will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood, will not, nor substantially or permanently impair appropriate use of development of adjacent properties, nor detrimental to public welfare. This is a blind side, side, there's just no way around it. It just reeks of it. That's why LERTA is a perfect example to utilize a program to help a blighted piece of property, and at the same time, create taxes and job opportunities. I just hope the board should.
You know, I'd like to say, I'd like to say that, um, also in that discussion, or prior to that discussion, number twenty-two, no one appeared in support of the application. And I can tell you, you might call it blighted property, that's probably the, some of the best alfalfa I've ever seen. And when, in West Rockville Township, it's gorgeous, it's beautiful.
The farmland's good.
It's farmland. And in this township, people in the surveys that we've gotten back from the residents, the most important thing is open space, cornfields, alfalfa fields, and no development. And we have to listen to the residents as well.
Oh, good. One more public comment? Or another public comment?
What, what, real quick? Don White, I guess we've seen, um, throughout the country, a lot of this corporate welfare where a company will come in and a lot of money will be dumped on them to back up the property, all kinds of money. And then the company never pans out, they move away before the ten years is even up. So even if we go into this, I would like to see some kind of guarantee that if they don't stay, they have to pay us back. That's all.
Okay, any other public comment? Going once, twice, and closing public comment? So we next gonna get up to committee reports and planning commission.
Evening.
Evening.
Be a little boring after all that.
You're never boring.
Um, planning commission met last Tuesday, we had, uh, one applicant on the agenda, W Gateway, Rich Hill Associates. Um, they're proposing to subdivide approximately twenty acres into two parcels along Rich Hill Road, funding the, uh, the W gateway property. One parcel of two and a half acres would have the existing farmhouse that they had purchased. Another vacant parcel of five point five acre would be across Rich Hill Road, the property. A point two acre parcel would be merged with the joining Rich Hill Associates property, which is primarily in Richmond, Tampa. And eleven point two seven acre parcel would be merged with the W gateway property, the property that. Properties are in the RC zoning district. Uh, no construction is proposed. They are currently working on a new set that designed for lot one. Lot one, when it has the farmhouse. So, you know, the plan's gonna be held up until they, until they get approval on that design. Can pull waivers that fit with the, with the application. Planning Commission is recommending judicial preliminary final approval. Questions on that one?
Yeah, I do, Chris. They haven't come to us for any approval or any permits on anything that they've done up there with the compressor station. Why would they come now? Why would we grant anything? Mary? Do we, do we have any reason to grant anything?
We can talk about this, this is not a topic I'm gonna give legal advice under the public.
Okay. Can it be tabled for now? Or?
Well, it's not, it's not before you.
They haven't become.
He's just before you.
They're gonna be a while.
They're gonna be, okay. Thank you.
All right, so we also took a look at the, uh, new electronic sign ordinance, uh, the grant. We were basically on board with it, had a few questions, terms and suggestions. Um, first was the fact that, uh, some of the permitted routes went through residential areas. Assuming that we don't want electronic signs in whole areas, so we were worried there might be a, I think, for that. Another one had to do with buffer plantings. Uh, the dress states that the flowering trees, you plant it within a fifty foot radius along each side of the sun. We do expect that a majority of any electronic sign would. That you didn't have to plant a tree in the middle of the road, or the sign would have to be at least. So that's something that needs to be addressed. We also had an audience member ask if, uh, her church could use a lot of private signs. They're just on Alton Avenue, it's not part of the, uh, proposed ordinance. So we thought maybe that it might, might be something to look into, uh, exempting houses of worship and uh, veterans associations. That's just the DFW that already has. And that's what we had on that. Any questions you're at?
I will say you brought up some good points there.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, we had some good audience participation. So that's all I have for the floor report.
Yep, I didn't make the meeting, but just watched the replay and everything seemed like good ideas, or good questions and good answers. So I have no questions.
I'll make a motion, we, we, Chris's report is presented.
I will second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next up, Mr. Rice, Park and Rec.
Park Rec, uh, oh, we got sunshine, good luck, so it's part. Fine. I'm afraid last year. All right. My first, uh, comment tonight is a request, um, to fill our alternate position on Park Rec, uh, we've been recommended to be, to have some, uh, three, Mr. Valnols, be the alternate through that Park Rec. That would get us fully staffed, the seven members, an alternate and our two junior members. Reminders, September Fest, yeah, if you don't have any, under twenty-nine, last Sundays in September, um, from twelve to four, across the street, James Memorial, it's a free event for everybody else, such as Trig, minus the boot traps, obviously. But, um, it's a great day for, I mean, we have a lot of stuff on the agenda. Uh, if I have a mention of three, who, 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 or in Paris, we'd be there. Harrison D. really. The lot, the life of the iron, they, they come out and they're like, then, uh, we have a video down here today, we'll be here for two hours, they have a great time. It's, it's great time. Um, yeah, and plus, on the pet train, and every, everybody else is gonna be here. So we have a lot of good stuff. Top of luck. Um, we have a feature film required, um, October twelfth. Put that on your calendar, it's just the end of dark, um, just the end of class, I should say. Um, when the movie starts, uh, we had, uh, made the decision on hotel transforming number three. So it'll be a good, it'll be good, uh, cross our fingers, we'll all ready for all three of these. I, Mr. Knowles, that's September Fest, and feature film on that.
Great.
I do.
Yes, sir.
First of all, uh, I was approached by someone from the Historical Society to say thank you for your support of the Heritage House Festival. Second, um, how are the trees that the Girl Scouts had planted over there doing, how are they doing in this hot weather?
You know what? I will note tomorrow, I accept the baseball pitch.
Okay. And as far as William Knowles, I'm on board with that.
Are you making a motion to make that a motion? I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye. You got your member. You're welcome.
Thank you.
And next Conservation Committee.
Good to see you again.
Hello.
Uh, we had our last meeting on May sixteenth. We were excited that David brought us the acreage ovals finally to get those on our remaining properties. Um, they should be up by the end of this month. One of the other committee members was gonna take them, put them up, but we haven't had that confirmed that they're up yet, but the goal is to have them up by the end of the week. Um, we are also asking permission to change our meeting times from seven PM to five PM on the Wednesday that, the Thursdays that we meet. Um, we've had several residents want to meet with us to talk about their properties, and they've always requested to meet with us before our meeting starts, um, because of driving after dark or things of that sort. Um, so we were in agreement to meet at five PM, but pending your approval, we would like to, from the time a PM started, um, by next year, July. Uh, we had, um, a good participation and showing in the Heritage House Day on June ninth, we got to use our brand new tent. We also had tote bags made that we were giving out for donations. Um, so we have a bunch of those to continue, we'll bring those to September Fest as well, which we will have our tent set up. And we did field a lot of great questions from community members, unders, wanting to understand a lot more about conservation easements. We also had a large, um, map of the township available so people could see the properties that are already being preserved and a lot of people wanted to find their properties, so it was kind of a neat little thing to have with conversation. Um, and then we did have our tote bag approved and use those at the first event to collect donations and, and, and.
Okay. I do have, I wanted, do wanna make a, a comment regarding the, the meeting change, okay? Because we have, we had visited this some time ago about a meeting change. Here's, here's my concern, as far as permanently changing a meeting, a public meeting. Most people work during the day, they can't attend a five o'clock meeting if they so chose. I'm not saying that people do, we, we often see hardly anybody come to Park and Rec meetings or your meeting in particular. However, to change that meeting permanently, that would mean that most people that work can't attend that meeting if they wanted to come. So what I would like to suggest is, is, is it possible to, to set up a special meeting where you have to, where you would meet with those people that are interested in preserving their property? Which, that's something you talk about in executive session anyway, isn't it? Or not?
Yes, but trying to get everybody there on the same date at the same time. It's, it's organizing seven different volunteers.
I understand that.
And that's more the, the difficult part, is working everyone's schedule, instead of setting it up at a certain time and everyone knows when to be there.
I just struggle with changing.
I understand your.
Public meetings, that people that work would wanna go to attend. That's my, that's my position, I'm only one of three.
Yeah.
Uh, I'd like to say, um, logistically, having served on the Conservation Committee, and logistically getting all the members, and especially the people who would prefer not to drive it in dark, um, I think it works best to have it earlier. We did it, um, with the Regional Police Department, and we still have those meetings at five o'clock. And it hasn't, my knowledge, been an issue. So I would be in favor of, uh, saying it moved.
And as the middle ground, I understand, since I'm surrounded by both sides as usual. Now, I do understand the, uh, desire to have meetings open for everybody, but I know the Conservation Committee is a relatively narrow focus. So I can see why it would be worthwhile, just scheduling wise, because usually the Conservation Committee's big outreach is at Heritage House, is at September Fest. People don't just wander in at seven o'clock and wonder, oh, there's some, there's lights on in the township building, and we'll see what's going on. It is sort of a much more scheduled. So I would be okay with moving to five. Although I do think, I, I do understand the idea that you can also then cancel meetings, but if you do it as a special meeting, then you move it to five, and we don't have to re-advertise everything, which is another slight annoyance.
The challenge.
You gonna make that motion? But I will make a motion that, to, uh, provide for changing the Conservation Committee to a five PM time, starting for the next meeting. We, we can get that advertised in time?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
I'm gonna say nay, just because I believe that people that work should be able to attend. Thank you.
Question, you had, you had trifolds made for this, uh, are they, are they available here at the Township Building?
Um.
I mean, like on the front counter?
I don't know if you brought any back with you, or if you took them to the other event.
Uh, we, I.
Did you get rid of all?
No, we got, we still had a couple left, and they were, should be back up on.
Okay, I'll check before I leave tonight, and I can drop some off to make sure.
Hmm.
Yeah, they, they were, they bought them from a lot of people, they took them, it was nicely simplified process. We do have interest, so hopefully to be moving forward with some things soon.
Did you give a lot of bags away?
Uh, we, well, they had to make a donation. And we're giving them away, but. But yeah, we did, we, but we have a hundred right now, so we're hopefully by the end of September Fest, we'll have to order more.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for what you do and your participation.
And, excuse me. Next up, Commissioner Reports, Chief.
Good evening.
Good evening, Chief.
Uh, I have the May twenty twenty-four activity report, the September, you know, this department responded to seven hundred sixty calls for service. The month of May, three hundred and ten of those calls were released throughout the township, four hundred fifty-two were in West Rockville Township, five of those remaining called or assisted in alienation. The department had a twenty-nine traffic crashes, all those crashes seventeen were reportable, twelve were non-reportable, with twelve occurring in East Rockville Township and the remaining here in West Rockville Township. Our crime activity for the month of May, our group A offenses have been a diverse process, uh, eight property crimes, six crimes against persons, crime, I'm sorry, five crimes against society, and then we had ten group B offenses. Those reported crimes included, one DUI craft in East Rockville Township, two simple assaults in East Rockville Township, two truck complaints, one fraud, three harassments, one false report to law enforcement, one theft, I'm sorry, two theft reports, and two criminal, uh, two criminal trespassing reports. Here in West Rockville Township, we had six DUIs for DUI crashes, one simple assault, one disorderly conduct, three reports of frauds, five reports of harassment, two reports of a sex offense, excuse me, two theft reports, and then one trespassing report. In the month of, uh, May, we also filed thirty tra, uh, sorry, thirty criminal charges. Those charges included two criminal use of a community using device, two possession of illegal offensive weapons, firearms, uh, eight charges DUI, one charge of fleeing to avoid prosecution, a charge of resisting arrest, two charges drug possession, two charges of drug paraphernalia, one stalking charge, five, uh, five charges of harassment, one false report to law enforcement, one felon prohibited to possess a firearm, and we cited or arrested three people for hit and roll crash. Our other police activities in the month of May, we had a hundred ninety-one traffic enforcement details, we issued ninety-one traffic search agents and issued seven hundred traffic warnings, conducted sixteen school checks. Our other police activities in the month of May, we had a hundred ninety-one traffic enforcement details. We issued ninety-one traffic search agents and issued seventy-nine traffic warnings, conducted sixteen school checks, a hundred thirteen park checks, thirty-seven business checks. Officers, officers attended or participated in a hundred and thirty-six hours of training. So year to date, we're at three thousand six hundred and eight calls for service. We handled a hundred and forty-two traffic crashes, a hundred twenty-eight reported offenses, two hundred eighty-nine criminal charges that we filed. And the officers have participated or attended seven hundred and one hours. That would be your May twenty twenty four activity report.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
I have no questions.
I have no questions. Great job, Chief.
No questions. Thank you for getting the, uh, timer back up on Ridge Road again across from the park that seems to get people to slow down.
A little bit, please, Mr. Sherman.
Chief, protect and serve, right? Yeah, thank you. I'll make a motion. We accept the chief's report.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And next report is Joint Rec Authority, which I'm giving.
Okay, it's the, uh, West Rockville, uh, West Rockville, uh, Joint Recreation Authority. On June fifth, uh, we run over, uh, working on our new, uh, process for getting a photo ID or a barcode ID so that we have less chance of people sharing. The ID, so we don't have somebody handing it off, so we're actually going to be able to get a bit more revenue and also keep track of people a little bit better. That's coming along, so, um, the status, uh, mentioned that we had a craft fair that we're looking at. It looks like a lot of the vendors did not want to be out in June, July, August, so we're looking more towards September, October for craft fair. Uh, we are looking to the, to the community picnic, which we're thanking for all the volunteers and our managers and, uh, the lifeguards, which will be, which is special for August tenth. As of right now, fundraising activities, we have received approximately sixty-seven, six thousand seven hundred nine in donations, a total of approximately fifteen thousand overall. And then we've had some, uh, little fundraising. We also have direct donations of twenty-five hundred from St. Peters and another five hundred from Brady and all this. Uh, this is craft handle before the update for the pool opening. At this point, the result lining opening, we have. Three hundred and eighty yesterday. We probably broke that today. So we've had the pool being well used as of last week. We also had been, uh, helping out Fender Town, for example, their pump went down, so we were hosting their swim team. And also having some of our swim lessons and also having, uh, Coach White's, uh, sports camp at the same time. So it's nice to see at nine o'clock, we already have the entire parking lot full with people looking for the people outside that are using the entire area. Which is a nice thing to see. We also have this year will be host our Future Stars Day Camp. We will be coming out using boot tunes hanging up two P M. They've already started showing up among a couple of other day camps, which we have been working with. So it's nice to have another day camp, because we've been working with several. We have streamlined the ways for day camps to come in. If anybody, if anybody wants to, uh, add this to the day camp, uh, just give us a call. Uh, we're working on the Sponsor Appreciation Board, which lists everybody who has donated time, donated money, donated effort. We're also, I've been working with our new vendor for the snack shop, which is the Hickory State, which meant so much money to go from Burke City and then also from down in Silverdale. Here at the Penrich Senior Center, uh, they've been working on their ice cream selection, their food selection, doing the pizza day. So he's been very happy with that. Uh, we also been, also were able to finalize times with Spring Mountain Day Camp, which are actually coming in from Spring Mountain, coming out to use Holiday House Pool. So we're starting to pull people from further and further into Montgomery County, which is good to see. Uh, we, through the, uh, other possible fundraising events, uh, we had done a wine and cheese center a couple of years ago, looking to redo that, getting, seeing about using the park. We need things to see that the big lights, doing car shows and seeing about getting a couple of food trucks to come out. Excuse me. Before then, we do executive, executive session, we look into personnel and insurance. Since, aside from that, uh, as it pulls up and running. We, uh, were able to get this, a couple of skimmers redone. As of right now, everything is working pretty consistently at a pretty stable water level and moving along quite well.
Thank you for the report, Hal.
And you should have a good turnout the, uh, rest of this week.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Right.
Yep. The only thing you'll have to do is you will have to top off that pool because there will be some evaporation.
Evaporation.
We've had that and we've got, I've already got the, uh, the phone numbers for North Ten Water Authority to let them know that we're cracking it and we feel due to that they, they're determined that now. So we've been working with them and actually helped them quite a bit. For the pool, it's one of those, uh, it's nice to see, cause we also should have to thank, uh, Stella'sville Fire Department, because they brought in a couple of extra hoses, because some of the fire hoses that we use have started to degrade and started leaking more than they were carrying.
Oh. That's not good.
Uh, we, uh, we work around it. Some of the couplings are a little bit, uh, boring, because we usually get the old fire hoses, but.
Okay.
And further.
Oh, just your, your, your new volunteers are up to speed and doing well, right?
Yep.
See the, the audience tonight.
At the burp.
Should mention, we also did have a pretty good turnout, because, uh, Holiday House also set up for the Heritage House Festival. So we were actually set up by the side of Conservation Committee and.
Right.
We seem to have a lot of, uh, people interested in that, so it's nice to have that synergy where the Holiday House can put up waters for the Heritage House and the Heritage House can do the same. Both of them are helping support the. Both of them are helping support each other and to have a quick thank you, because, uh, the winner of the Holiday House membership is one of the, his family from. Officer that may have since, uh, decided to donate that back towards the media family.
Wonderful.
Great. Well done. Thank you. Okay, there's no comments. I'll make a motion to approve the joint rec report as presented.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You got it. Thanks, Hal.
Right.
Back to Mr. Sherman. Okay, and back on schedule, uh, Engineers Report, Mr. Vella.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item on our report is a stormwater management update. Uh, I know it's not a very exciting topic. I'll try to, try to get through it quickly. Uh, related to our, to the state MS four program. I'm sure none of you remember what that stands for, but it's, uh, municipal separate storm sewer system, but the number of S's in there. What that really means, separate storm sewers, really talking to, about the storms where we have not combined with sanitary sewer. We don't have combined systems in this part of Bucks County. That's a sort of old city, city issue, but that's what they're referring to, is our regular storm sewer system. So some years back, probably almost two decades back, um, they implemented this program, which came out of the Clean Water Act. It was an EPA mandate to the State Department of Environmental Protection, which passed it along to you and all the other, or most of the other municipalities. It is geared towards municipalities that have higher density or what they refer to as urbanized areas based on your census maps. So not a hundred percent of the township is covered in the, in the program, but a good portion of it is. Uh, it runs on a five-year cycle. We are actually in a renewal cycle right now. We've just submitted our renewal application. We don't anticipate many changes or conditions on our permit. We did have another municipality that just got their permit approved or their renewal approved. And it appeared to be pretty much a rollover of the current standards that we've been following. Uh, so that, that's good news. Uh, they did not add, it doesn't appear that they've added new, new requirements. One of the requirements, um, we do have is a prepare annual reports, though every, by every September, we have to. It's not exactly a calendar year, but you're, you're reporting on, on the prior year. Reporting on our inspections, any problems, any ordinance updates. That are activities that we do. And we have to report on public information and public meeting. We're obligated to have one public meeting a year to, to have this discussion. Uh, one of the things we do in the program is what they refer to as outfall inspections. So we prepared a map of the township for all the storm sewer systems and where they discharge to. The idea is if there's a spill somewhere in the township, we know exactly where to go to look for, uh, look for the outfall and where, where we come out in a creek. We have to do periodic inspections of those, uh, documented, uh, and look for what they refer to as illicit discharges. So if someone had connected a sewer to a storm sewer system, we would see it, what they refer to as a dry weather flow. There's water coming out in dry weather, then we have to trace it back to somewhere. I will say, we haven't had any problems in the township with dry weather flow or, or connection, so that's been good news. Other thing we do, some basin inspections also for larger stormwater management basins. Public education, uh, required to have a public education component. Added for West Rockville, that is mostly our website. Uh, we have a lot of links. There's a whole stormwater page and a lot of links on that. Uh, the township and our office are also have membership in Heritage Conservancy, which does, uh, supplements our public education, because they do mailings and, and send out other things and have public education, uh, events for stormwater. And, uh, now they do seminars like rain gardens and other, other improvements you can do on your own house. Uh, K D E P audits, uh, they do audit the program. That was on hold for many years through COVID and they restarted. We've had several municipalities, uh, that have had to go through the audit process. We did it successfully. They will look at all our documentation and we have all the mapping in place, that we have, uh, all our permits and. Information that we have. They will also do a physical inspection of the municipal facilities. So say the Public Works Department, do they have school prevention kits? Do they have generally good housekeeping, et cetera, et cetera? They could look at parks or other municipal facilities, but, uh. I anticipate, you know, within the next year that they will notify the township that, that they'll be. The other major program that they added to this, uh, a few years ago was the Pollution Reduction Program. What they're looking for is, is the municipalities to reduce the amount of sediment that reaches the creek. Not, that's the pollution they're talking about, sediment, because sediment generally carries other pollution. So they feel if you could control sediment getting in creek, you could control others' other pollution. So some years back, we had to do, uh, calculations for the township of loading factors and how many basins we have. Get addressing. We had to come up with a handful of projects that we could implement. To try and reduce sediment. Um, some of them could be a stream bank repair, some could be some basin repairs. Unfortunately, the pro- the projects that we had initially, uh, proposed. Aren't panning out right now to meet the current guidelines. So we're in the process of, uh, with our permit renewal, we'll probably make a application to modify our PRP program. Um, we're, we're looking at alternates now and upping more stream bank programs, because they seem to be a low-hanging fruit, but relatively easy project to do. One of the drawbacks for us in West Rockville Township is you don't own any stormwater bases. They've all been homeowner association.
Yep.
Property, which is great for the long-term maintenance for township standpoint, but we also don't have access to, to the facilities, uh, to do some repairs on. And most of them are newer, so they meet a lot of the, they meet a lot of the new standards to begin with. We're in the process of updating our PRP projects and we anticipate that one of the, um. One of the conditions on your permit renewal will be that we follow through with some more, uh, implementing some more of the PRP. So that'll be forthcoming. Uh, to the, to piggyback on stormwater issues, Bucks County has started a new program, uh, to update County Act one sixty-seven plan. Another state law that requires counties to develop stormwater plans for each watershed within their, within their bounds. So say, uh, so Hig- Go Higgin Creek, East Branch, Perkin, Elmen Creek, Delaware River. It's been more than twenty years. Like closer to thirty years that the county did some of these programs and they did them individually on the different watersheds. This current initiative is to do one plan for the entire, for the entire county. Um, that will not have anything to do with sediments and inspections of outfalls, like the state requires that. This will be more toward. Reduction in stormwater runoff from new development. What are the standards for new development? So that program is underway. We anticipate that when that program is done, there'll be a, a new plan adopted, similar to a comprehensive plan that we do here, but it would be a countywide stormwater comprehensive plan. That'll be approved by the state. And then the township will be obligated to update our stormwater management ordinance to be consistent with that program. So that'll be forthcoming, uh, probably not this year. Probably be next year. So that is the current status of our program and where we're going forward. So we're in a renewal process for the N P D S MS four permit. We're going to request an update to our PRP program to, uh, suggest new, new projects to reduce sediment in creeks. And we are working with Bucks County on their one sixty-seven plan update. So there's no, nothing that requires action at this time by the board.
Okay.
Wanted to bring that update, uh, to meet our program requirements and tell you that there will be a few things forthcoming in the, you know, by the end of the year, you'll see somebody seems to come back around for, for your approval.
Okay, thank you.
Unless there's any questions, that's.
There's, uh, years ago, I remember I was working with Riverkeeper and Perkin and Watershed Conservancy, did a couple of stream bank restorations. Are they still as active with the outreach? Cause I know that Watershed, Perkin and Watershed Conservancy was somewhat active in getting the storm basins, uh, basically native plants and redone.
Yeah, and they haven't, not that I've been aware of in Bucks County.
Okay.
I, I know they're more based in Montgomery County, because the rest of Perkin, Elmen Creek and whatnot is over there. I haven't.
Still have the invisible line between Heritage Conservancy and Perkin and Watershed and Natural Lands Trust. Okay, yeah. Unfortunately, our, all of our soil out here is clay, so once it gets disturbed, you put clay in a mason jar, shake it up, and you come back about a day later and it's finally settled out, because not much you can. Do as far as detention basins, it'll hold it long enough.
Actually, actually, Hal, when they build a pond, they clay it. That's how they keep the pond from leaking.
Yeah.
So usually when, when clay's exposed, the clay stays there. General.
But, but that is the, the, uh, one of the main options is to. Modify basin to have extended detention.
Yeah.
So the longer the water maintains in the basin, the more sediment could drop out before it flushes. And that is one of the main projects. Again, we don't have a lot of basin to be on, harder to, harder for us to do those. So we're looking at other options.
Okay, I have no questions. Yep.
Okay, then we'll move on to the second item on my agenda, which is a request by the, uh, warehouse project on Cory Road. Two G project, uh, regarding their topsoil export. We have representatives here tonight. Would you like to give a quick? Overview of your plan?
Hello, can you hear me, everyone? To see.
Again.
Definitely not an exciting topic. So, uh, the warehouse.
You're gonna talk about MS fourteen?
No, dirt. It's a dirt, a dirt nerd.
So as everyone on the board may be aware, the warehouse project department, a representative of construction management here, so they're excited for the project. Uh, all along during the approval process, there's been understanding that we were having to stop small, large warehouse going up, large imperious footprint, park lot. Your ordinance has a provision that says topsoil must remain on site unless at your discretion, we say that it's removed from the site. So through the, uh, land development process, we made every effort to lose that topsoil, keep it on site, and keep burn. Additional spreading on site to the majority of that topsoil that's stayed on site. But the fact of the matter is, if the large areas flip, there's only so much topsoil. So, uh, we're here tonight just to request an approval formally. It's been discussed all along to remove some of that topsoil from the site that is, that is necessary. On that site. And, uh, speaking of Mr. Val, that's, uh, I request the. I can get into specifics, uh, if you guys might help me come up to talk more technical if we need to.
I can get into specifics. You guys might help me come up to talk more technical if we need to, but really, I think this is more just what we're happy to say. It gets on that topsoil on site. So there's been a couple of locations identified. We did. Reach out to try to keep it within county township limits. Where it's going, there's two properties. It's a, you lose topsoil, when you move topsoil or any sewer on the site, it's good to the site that's permitted, it just goes. Right. Very few of them are accepting the bill. So we have to make sure that we're going to assess its permit. The two locations where we're going with the topsoil are Bert Industries, one's in Hartford, about three and a half miles from the site. The other one's inside of it, which is two point nine miles from the site. So trying to keep it within township limits, but there's also nowhere that.
Well, my, if I may. My, my position has always been, you know, that that it's important to try to keep what we can on, on, in the township on site. But I would not be opposed to allowing the staff. Mr. Lippincott, an engineer, to work out where, how the logistics happens or where it goes. From my perspective, now I'm only one of three.
I agree with that.
You do?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
That's all you need.
That's all you need for what? Because I heard two different things here. I think Steve just said, go ahead, take the town, the topsoil. That's what I think Justin just heard. Steve say, go ahead and take the township.
No, I don't think, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't.
I think that's what Justin just heard.
You're gonna work it out with this guy right here. He's the manager. Okay. Is that clear enough, Mary?
Dirt nerds.
Thank you, everybody.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you.
That is all I have under my report unless there's any other questions.
I have no questions.
I have none. I would make a motion to.
I'll second that motion. Aye.
Aye.
I have no solicitors report this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Everly.
That's the best kind, isn't it?
Yes, it's. Base X, the best part is no part, the best report is no report. And our manager's report, Mr. Lippincott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item is last month. We talked about the ballot question for the J R A borrowing, putting it on the ballot, all ballot. You asked me to meet with Sellersville Borrow. In your packet is the meeting notes, but I'll hit some of the highlights. Sellersville Borrow requested township to pass a recreation tax. Instead of allocating funds through other means as a feasibility study needs to be completed. And they need a reliable funding source. So one of the things that Sellersville Borough has been contemplating for the last three years is implementing a recreation tax. So that was the first thing that Sellersville Borough wanted to discuss. We went on to discuss the ballot question. They felt that the ten million was not feasible because it would be competing with Menlo. It would build a complex that would be similar to Menlo. They thought the three million dollar borrowing would be more feasible to do the repairs and the rehabilitation. That were outlined in the market stuff.
All right. Well, from my perspective, I would not support raising taxes for a, for a recreational tax. But I would support if this were to be put on the ballot for the citizens to decide whether they want to. Spend money on the pool. By, by tax increase. And it would be, it would be decided upon the voters. That's, that's what I feel should happen.
Totally agree. I think that we have to hear from the residents. I mean. The spend, whether it's between one and three or between seven and ten, and I think one and three is more realistic. Uh, we need to know what the, what the residents would like. I mean, if we're gonna make a. Decision, we have to have that information.
We, we do. We have to have that. And I, and I will say, Hal's done a great job as far as. The last two polls that I've been at, election polls, Hal has had clipboards out with, with requests of volunteers and I didn't have any. The only person that signed that clipboard was Hal and that's, that's been at the table where you go when you vote. At, at the V F W, that's the Rock Hill polling place. I don't know about. What took place over at the twin churches. I didn't knew that, that particular clipboard. Anyhow, I think, I think it's, it's worthy that the citizens, you know, weigh in on what they think.
And this is one of multiple funding options. When I. When I started at the Joint Rec Authority, one of the first things is going in, getting the six inch, five inch, inch thick binder. Which had the history of how Holiday House was initially financed, which was. By the township and the borough, each renting part of it in order to provide an income stream through the rentals. Going through and floating a bond, then going through and actually getting a regular mortgage, a regular note and mortgage, which were both. Paid down so that there are ways of getting a large amount upfront. There are ways of smoothing this out. Very similar to with getting a mortgage, you pay it off monthly in smaller amounts. But it's the hard part and the same thing for the sewer authority, for the sewer authorities, that upfront cost. And then finding a way of amortizing it so that you can make, so that you can maintain it. But if we are comfortable, if we are.
You have two, yeah, we have two recommendations that we.
Yep. Fair. So put it on the ballot. What about? Entertain a motion.
We're putting exactly the amount, you know? I didn't hear.
Well, there's renovation, which is one to three, or replacement, which is seven to ten.
Correct.
And I think I heard. In order not to compete with Menlo, at least from the Sellersville perspective, it should be one to three as a renovation.
That's kind of vague. I think you have to go with the higher side if you're gonna do that.
Well, do all say one to three, seven to ten or nothing. Let's find out.
Well. I don't, we can't ask one to three. We can ask. Not to exceed three, not to exceed ten. So. Thought not to exceed three, is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, I think so, because in that case. That would be an upfront amount. And what we actually did for years was. Essentially, take a smaller amount each month and use that to fund the lump sum upfront. By floating the bond, floating it.
Yes, I understand you said. The only thing I want to make clear here, okay, is that when we, when you put this on the ballot, you better make sure that you have the correct number. That you are comfortable with. Now, that was the recommendation that Mr. Lippincott gave us from the meeting with Sellersville. Is that correct? Okay.
But I think that number also reflects the. Study that we.
Study that we had done, yes. So I want to make sure what, Mary, whatever you, you prepare, we, we have that number not to exceed, whatever that number may be. So that the people know what they're voting for when they, when they cast their ballot.
No, I, I think you're absolutely right. It has to be a concrete number.
Yes.
Were you doing it? Do you want me to give a speech on electoral debt?
Sure.
I, I, I think, I think you should make some people, there are citizens sitting in this room that should be aware of what this means to them or what this will mean to them. Briefly.
I mean, it's gonna mean a tax increase is what it's.
Right.
Sure.
For, in order for a municipality to incur debt, it can do one of two ways. It can either, you can decide as a board yourself that you're going to go out and borrow money. And that's called just regular debt. Electoral debt is when the residents authorize you. Through the referendum to incur debt. And. Part of that process, the process begins with the adoption of a resolution or ordinance. Specifying that you, your intent to put this issue on the ballot. That ordinance will include the ballot question and also. A simplified version of the ballot question. And usually with electoral debt. I like to put in there an idea of how much it will cost like the average taxpayer per year. For the duration of the payoff of the debt, so that when people are looking at it, like that's one of the things you usually put in the.
I think that's very fair. That should be done.
Yeah, that, so I'll need Greg's help with that.
Okay.
If this is something that you're interested in, then, then after that, then the county puts it on the ballot and when people come to vote. That'll be one of their options to vote yes or no. It's a yes or no question.
Okay.
On the, on the debt. So there are time limits.
I was gonna say, there's time.
Involved and. It, we have to have the adopted ordinance in a form that the county will accept to the county. In September. Which means. It's really best to adopt it next month. So a lot of times they want to tinker with your plain language. Question, they might want to say it a different way and best to go with them. So you want to leave an extra month to be able to do whatever tinkering you need to do with that.
Okay.
So if you're making a motion to authorize it to go forward, I think we need to authorize. The drafting and advertising of an ordinance that you will consider at your July meeting.
One thing I want to make, well, I did talk about, you know, making sure you have a concrete number is that study that we had done stated that. If the pool had to be completely rebuilt, it would be ten million. Is that right?
No, that would be a brand new pool.
Brand new pool.
That would be a totally brand new facility.
But I want to make sure that if you're covered, if you, if this does go through, that you're, you're not. Spending, let's just say three million dollars and it ends up, you need another million. That would be catastrophic that if that were to happen, because the pool is fifty four years old. Am I correct in saying that? Okay. So I just want to make sure when we do do this, that you have everything down that, hey, this is what it is. This is what is needed. Do you want to fund it? Plain and simple. So Hal, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you because you were, you were part of the joint rec authority. What's the number that we should be putting down? Not to exceed.
I would say not to exceed three million because that seems to be what.
Okay.
The borough discussion has come towards and. That actually somewhat matches up with the twenty eleven numbers that we had when we went through this, the last couple of rounds.
David, are you, are you, are you comfortable with that?
Yep.
Okay. What else, Mary?
Well, we're gonna have a chance to look at it in July.
Right. I won't have a chance to talk to you again before you look at.
Correct. That's why we need to make sure.
Be advertised then. What, what will you do with the three million dollars?
We'll refurbish. They're gonna refurbish the bathhouses, refurbish the coping.
So we don't have to talk about it tonight.
It's all in the market stuff.
Can you provide that to Mary?
I have it. I have.
Okay. No, I mean, what, what you need to know to put on that ballot. Okay.
I'll work with Greg.
Yes, I was gonna suggest that.
All right. Thank you very much.
Yeah, between the current market study and the twenty eleven. Essentially. Facilities study or junior facility study, we've got enough to know what we need to fix and what we need to be improving. Where to start.
I think the important thing is it's renovation, not replacement.
Yes.
Yep.
And, and I just think it's important to give the people an idea of what they're gonna be spending the money on to blank the Holiday House pool.
I have all that information.
We, we have to keep it succinct.
Mr. Chairman. So it's three million dollars for the whole project.
Correct.
If we're putting on a referendum for West Rock Hill taxpayers. Are you gonna explain that we're on the hook for whatever percentage of West Rock Hill payable?
Yeah, this is West Rock Hill is paying three million dollars.
This would be up too. And the idea is that this would be in conjunction with Sellersville Borough. It could be. It depends on what they're, what we're looking, what I'm, what I'm looking at is the way that the pool was initially built, which was both borough and. Township came in and instead of putting the money in upfront, they went through with bond financing. They actually floated a municipal bond through the joint rec authority. So we're looking, I'm looking, you know, we're not gonna be suddenly putting the taxes up to pull out three million. We're looking at, my idea is we're looking at funding this as part, just like you have a mortgage. You don't come, you almost never pay cash. To go buy it. You find a way of financing it. This makes sure that we'd be able to get the financing to start doing these major. Sorts of renovations. That's what we're trying to figure out the numbers.
But yeah, I keep hearing three million. And that is.
That's what's going on our ballot. That's his recommendation to go on our ballot. That's why we discussed this very.
So assuming that we, we pay fifty fifty. So that makes the project up to six.
That's a possibility, that's the worst case possibility from the most recent study.
I think Mary's gonna write it so it's not to exceed three million. It could be much less than that.
Yeah, we could take less than that.
Yeah.
I just wanna know what this, what the total, because I hear three million. And I was assuming, assuming that this were the total project.
That's what we're still trying to negotiate with. The joint, well, that actually goes through the joint rec authority and also. His foot, that bill gets footed and the donations come to Holiday House pool from. The township and from the borough. That's the way it's been set up and for the last, you know, fifty four years. Township and the borough each year put in seed money, usually about twelve thousand. We've had up to fifteen. Based on that twelve or fifteen thousand from each township in the borough. We get a starting num, starting amount of about twenty five thousand put in by each town, by the township and borough combined. Based off of that, the joint rec authority bootstraps that into a budget of about two hundred and fifty thousand, up to two hundred and sixty thousand. In order to run the pool, pay the guards. And keep the pool up and running. So. The joint rec authority for the last fifty something years has been spinning straw into gold that you put them. If the two sides put in twelve thousand, we're funding a budget for the pool of about two hundred and fifty. So we're not doing too bad for the return on investment. But.
I, I think what Chris is asking is the total refurb is three million. And what West Rock Hill is saying is, yeah, we'll borrow up to three million, but they could also just say, no, we're gonna do one point five. But it gives them the flexibility to decide.
Covering ourselves.
On their own.
Okay.
Yes. It would be your real estate tax for township. Your real estate tax for township would go up and we have to calculate that amount and that will be on the ballot.
I don't know where you got the three.
No, it'd be, it would be a millage.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna have to calculate that out to be exact on a typical home so that the voters would understand.
Well, that's what I'm trying to. Understand as well as help everybody else understand that, you know, like if it was all my total real estate taxes. I'm talking about like a three percent increase in my taxes to the hundred and fifty dollars a year.
Offhand, it's about a fifty percent increase of your township portion of your tax. It's seven and a quarter. Fifty.
Fifty percent.
Fifty. And that's my guesstimate. If that is your township tax, yes. If it was five hundred dollars, it would go up to two hundred and fifty.
That's just a rough.
And that's rough. That's a guesstimate.
Nobody's taxes are five hundred though, in this township.
The township?
Yeah. Nobody's taxes are five hundred, just township.
We're close to it.
Really?
I do mortgage documents, I do ask for a tax for people all the time.
Wow.
There's, there's some people that it's not, because township taxes are lower than county.
Well, we understand that.
And the school. But yeah.
Okay. Well, they have a decision. Yeah, they'll have a decision to make, for sure.
And the next, 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 next month, when we get the ordinance drafted. We're going to have those numbers in it. That's part of it. So that, so we won't. That's part of it. So that, so we won't, we don't have to sit and play this guessing game.
Right.
Before you adopt the ordinance or resolution, the, those numbers will be available.
Right then, you gotta, you gotta hand out back.
I think Tony was first.
Yeah. Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I just have a question similar to what Chris was saying. What's, what's the agreement? If that were to go through, what is the agreement with Sellersville? Are, are they matching that? Because I feel like that we're putting on ballot that, that we're putting a bill to repair the pool when is there an agreement with Sellersville that they're matching that money?
It gives the township the power to borrow. It doesn't mandate that the township has to borrow. If obviously, if there's no agreement that's made, they don't have to borrow the money. We'll find out. But if we don't get it on the ballot in time, if we don't get it on by August, it won't be on the ballot. It's simply a question to see what the, the people want to do.
Is this an idea that it's worth proceeding for us to continue with? As I said, it's very similar to what both township and borough did initially, which is contribute seed money and then use that to bootstrap and get better financing. But until, if we don't advertise it, we can't do it. And we can't decide if we're going to do, we can't decide whether or not we're going to do it unless we advertise it now just to meet the clock because of the way elections go. Any other other comment? Okay, I guess we're up to arm mowing.
Arm mowing. Uh, yearly, we have in our budget $20,000 for a part-time employee to do arm mowing. Up until this time, we have not found somebody. I went out and got quotes from providers to do the arm mowing. Our mowing is not using our equipment, it's using their equipment. In your package is, I got two quotes. One is for $18,560 for two passes of the entire township on township roads from Mid-Atlantic Property Maintenance. The other one is 28,000 for two times. One if it's done before July 15th, one if it's asked after. I'm still working on a third phone quote. What I would be searching for the board of supervisors is motion authorizing the township manager to proceed with the arm mowing for two township, for two passes for the price not to exceed 18,560 for two passes. Once I get the third question.
Well, of course, this has been a big concern of mine because I've been on Greg almost for sure weekly, if not a couple of times a week about mowing. And there has been a lot of issues with breakdowns with staff. Basically him rushing to get the guys out before the meeting so that the roads get, get mowed so that they don't get yelled at. I know that we live in West Rock Hill Township and anybody that knows or runs any kind of equipment knows that there's rocks and there's stumps and there's all kinds of obstacles that we deal with. So I think this is a no-brainer as far as we already have the money that we have put in budget to do, to hire somebody. This would not be affecting our equipment. Our, our equipment would not be sacrificed to be broken and down. When we blew a line here two weeks ago, it was down, the machine was down for almost a week. So they got the parts for it and stuff. And the teeth that, that mow get banged up a lot as well. That doesn't mean we still can't go and mow back areas that need to be mowed more than one pass back or two passes with our machine and our guys at the direction of the manager. So I, I honestly would support moving forward with taking advantage of an outside contractor to arm mow. That would be two times, two passes a year.
Correct.
With their equipment.
Their equipment.
Not to exceed 18,5.
60.
Excuse me, yeah.
18,560.
Right. Close enough. You know, I, I've arm mowed, it's like one of the most difficult jobs there is to do. It just beats the heck out of the equipment and then it breaks it.
Yep.
And then it's down. I mean, if we have our arm mower and our guys available to do sight lines, that's important. The other daily mundane of just doing the roads twice, again, I, I agree with you. It's a no-brainer. We should do it.
And I also agree. Couple, a week or two ago, I remember coming down 309, they were doing arm mowing with the chain flail. I saw one of the scariest things, which is they had part of a sign stuck in the chain flail that was holding vertical on the left side. So it's one of those, okay, that's gonna get, that's gonna let, let loose sometime soon.
Yes.
So since it's coming in less than what we expected and it's gonna be somebody else's equipment that they're working on, on the hardest on equipment project, I also think that was a good idea.
So do you need a motion or do you have?
I have enough. I have direction. That's all I need for that.
Consider it done. Okay.
And that's all I have for my report.
That arm mowing will occur this year.
Yes.
Okay, then I want to take a motion to adopt the manager's report.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we get to old business, more equipment.
Old business. At last month's meeting, we talked about a backhoe. Supervisor Kaiser had a question about the knuckle boom. It is a knuckle boom. So.
It's very important that we be able to clean our ditches out and you need to be able to set up a backhoe. You need to be able to swing the boom to, to, to clean the ditch and the grade, the way the grade may be. So that was important.
And we don't have, and we don't have a grade all, so that's.
Right. If we don't have a grade all, that's, that's exactly why we got a backhoe with a knuckle boom. So he has satisfied my concern. I'm still not a case person, but the issue with the John Deere is, is getting parts and if, if I don't have to hear that we don't have parts or it's broken, the part isn't here, then that means we're being productive and the machine is not being used. And if the guys are comfortable using a case, then I'll have to learn how to myself. Okay?
Are you okay with the 590 SN?
I am. I mean, I've seen the, the dialogue on the differences between the two units. I am a case person. I love John Deere for around my house, but every contractor, it seems like, and most of the local governments all have case equipment that is very dependable. Having a unit that is very undependable and with their, I guess there's a lot of issues getting parts for it and then we're dead in the water. And that, that's our, probably our most important piece of equipment we have.
It is. It is. It very much is. Anytime a tree comes down the roads, whatever, the backhoe goes out, get the stuff off the road. Catastrophe, backhoe moves stuff. You can't run the township without a, without a good working backhoe.
And I, and I think the ability to finance it ourselves like we have done in the past.
And pay ourselves back. Yes. So I'm supporting of it. David, it sounds like you are.
I am.
As am I. So we're looking at a 590, which is the bigger brother to the 580.
And it's $186,738.14 and it's on Co-Stars, so it's under the state contract.
Minus what we can get.
You will sell the John.
Yeah, we'll, we'll sell the John Deere. Once it's in and once we have it up and running, then we'll put it out on.
By the way, in case you folks don't know, it is a 416. Am I correct?
Correct.
John Deere 416.
Okay, so we need one.
You made sound so trapped.
It's got all, it's got all new parts. It's got all new deals.
Kelly, tomorrow, you want to sign the papers?
Tony.
See, see, Greg.
It breaks down.
So what do you need, Greg?
I just need a, I just need a motion second.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And.
The, uh, the next item is the American Rescue Plan Fund Discussion on October 22nd, 2022. We had a meeting regarding it. Those minutes are in your, I didn't know if you wanted to discuss it any further. You have by December, the December meeting to allocate those funds.
My position is I think we still need a little time because we are not, I would like to see it used for roads because of the condition of roads, but there has to be some compromise somewhere. So I think we need a little time yet. We have time, you said, for a good till.
You have to make a decision by December.
By December. Okay. So this is June.
And you, and you know, we, we've had, have the discussion. We do have a list here of all the people that have come to us and suggested. And I just, we will get it done before the end of December.
Yes.
We just have to.
There's a little bit more than just making a decision.
Yep. Explain that to us, Mary.
I'm not prepared to explain that exactly to you, but I think that, go ahead, Greg.
You just have to make a motion to allocate the funds.
Okay.
And once funds are allocated, then you have another two years to spend.
Like, like just for an example for the public, if you, if we made a motion to allocate the funds to put it in the general fund.
For, for use of salaries over the.
It could be done.
Yeah, you could move it into the general fund by making a motion with a resolution.
We're not gonna lose the money.
No.
No. No, I have a resolution prepared for you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Wow.
Okay. Well, we don't need a motion yet, so I guess we just move to accept old business as read.
Unless any of the board of supervisors have old business questions?
No, and I have nothing under due.
The only thing I want to say, it's not old business, but I, I do want to say, I attended the briefly, I only had about an hour and a half to, to attend the Heritage House Festival. And I want to say that it was done very well and there was a really good attendance. And the work that has been done in the house has been what I've been asking for and, and looking to have done from volunteers over the years. So I want to commend publicly that the, the historical society on, and everybody that volunteered on putting together that Heritage House Festival and the Heritage House work that's been done. So David?
Thank you.
Share that to a lot of people.
We'll do that, yeah. And the food was good as well.
It was very good. The food was very good.
Burgers.
On the. Okay. So I don't have anything else regarding that.
Nor do I. Okay. I got a motion, Paul. Motion pending to those old business. All in favor?
Aye.
New business? I have none.
I have none.
I have none.
Okay. So we now are jumping forward to public comment at the end of the meeting. If anybody has any additional statements, please come up.
Dan Walker, I live on the Allentown Road, 1045 Allentown Road. I got a couple of complaints about the, the traffic going out. They got these tractor trailers coming down there. Some of them are so big. They, they actually almost pushed my wife off the road this week on a tight curve. Allentown Road, I know it's a state road, but can't we get signage somewhere? Keep these tractor trailers off of Allentown Road? When the northeast extension is down, construction or an accident or something, they come down 663 and they use Allentown Road. Why can't we make them go over to 309? 309 is made for heavier traffic.
Mr. Walker, I'd be happy to fill in a little bit on, on some of that. There is signage. Signage has been put up about three years ago now and there's signage all the way out of 663 when you touch Allentown Road. No tractor trailers over 45 feet in length. We would love to make them go out to 309. However, their GPS takes them down Allentown Road because that is a state highway, PennDOT Highway. The only thing that we can do from the township's perspective is to try to make comment to PennDOT on that matter and maybe try to talk to our own police department to, and when they do see trailers that are over 45 feet, I'm sure they stop them or notify them. Right, chief?
Chief, do you have a comment on that?
Um, I do not have a comment except that I, I agree, I agree. But I will also add that that for these to give a little bit of education on our part to the overall.
Yeah.
That's something I'll lose.
Thank you. But there are, there are signs. There are signs that say, no trailers over 45 feet.
My second complaint is, I live below Cerner Road. So it's a nice deep hill coming down to the single lane bridge. And I got these Japones at five o'clock in the morning, jay breaking on these trucks. You know what? Give me a break, you know? Can't we get signs, no jay breaking? I've seen signs all over different neighborhoods. No jay breaking in this section. Can we get signs on that?
We can look, we can look into what, what might be needed to do that.
I would follow up with, I guess also, if the chief, it sounds like we also need to find some way of reaching out to Milford and Richland because the police sitting at Allentown and 663, you're gonna be much more effective at keeping people from turning onto Allentown. Once they get onto Allentown, you're kind of stuck with, right on the fine. You really can't get them back off of Allentown. They can't turn around. They're.
Yep.
At the stone wall below Ridge Valley, with the trucks rubbing against it, hooking everything back.
All right. Thanks, Doug.
On that.
The bridge should have weight limits as well on what trucks.
Oh, they just rebuilt those bridges, one lane bridges. They're a brand new one lane bridge. So yeah, um, I'm gonna talk about the same thing. My wife came home the other day. She was pretty mad upset. What am I fault for, change? She almost got ran off the road there. She said, I don't know how I saved that. There's a three-foot ditch on one side and the trucks all the way over in my lane. Those trucks, so a semi truck is eight and a half feet wide. The lane on those roads is eight plus nine inches. There's no room for that. They can't go around those corners and keep their truck on their side of the road. It, it just won't work. And she was pretty upset. She's still scared to drive on the road, scared to drive out our road. Yeah, so they can't stay in lanes and Allentown Road is really getting dangerous. It's, it's just plain unsafe with them. They can go up and down the road every day. I showed you the cemetery wall. That's, that's just a mess. They can't go around that corner without rubbing up against it, pushing the path off of it. And destroying the wall. I'm sure none of them have stopped to pay anything for their damage. I agree with, with Dan about, I think it's, you know, just stunningly ignorant of those truck drivers, jay breaking at 5:00 AM in the morning all the way down that hill. And they, they put it on the top of the hill and go all the way down. I get it. They're trying to save their brakes, but no, it's people trying to sleep too. If I ran around on my motorcycle with straight pipes on, I bet I can get a ticket. I'd die out. So I, I called stats office about it again and asked them to actually get the state leagues out there to enforce the law. It's a state road. I mean, they should be doing it. There's nothing you can do about it.
Have you complained to PennDOT at all?
I haven't complained to PennDOT. I went to stats.
Well, gotta complain. Call PennDOT too. Try that. I tried it.
Stats.
All right. I can do that too. Um, yeah. You can control it or and start giving them tickets and let it, let it be known that you will pick it up. Maybe it'll help. Just give them a warning. I don't care. Thank you. Oh, and cobotas are.
First, I want to say thank you, going back to the sewer.
Just your name.
Angela.
I know, but for the record.
I want to say thank you though, for going back to the sewer issue with the building, Alex, whatever. I want to say thank you. It's nice to see the township looking out for residents when it comes to something like that, keep the cost down. So my other question is, we received a letter last year about the public sewer possibly coming through, applying helps and everything else. And we haven't heard anything about that. It was about, like Sid had it there, mentioned about applying for grants and everything, but what's going on, like all the neighbors, like the mayor, the, everybody asked me everything, but I don't know.
I could answer that.
Yep.
We're going through a similar process that Tupperboro was here today to talk about. We, we were further than them where we submitted the DEP, but DEP asked for additional documentation. So we're working through that process between West. So we're working through that process between West Rock Hill and East Rock Hill to provide the additional documentation to DEP. That's the first stage to get the DEP planning approval.
Okay.
And then the, the, the concept was in the attachment, we then go out, start seeking grant funds to see.
Oh, so they haven't been applied for yet?
No, because we don't have the DEP approval to move forward with it.
Okay, so that's the first step. And how long does this, something like this normally take?
I can't give you a number with DEP.
I just want to point on, if you've done it before.
Six months to a year. I mean, we're well into it. I think we're on our last. I think we're on our last list of things that the EP is going to ask. And so we're working through that right now.
Do we have any other public comment?
Does that pertain to the entire township or?
Yeah, we're uh, for anybody who's watching the replay, this is Old Bethland Pike, Tabor Road, Three Mile Run, which has a combination of small, of similar to circle drive, small lots up in the stones and also has some concerns with groundwater. So this is as long as they're building one and tearing up the road on that side, we're going to try to extend this to fix as many problems at one time. But if they're with that, is there any other public comment going once, twice? Oh, we're closing public comment then. And adjournment. Thank you, everybody. Adjourned to executive session, actually.
I'll make that motion. I'm making a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Bob. Thanks for your efforts.